And the traditional and current territories of the Coast Salish people who have lived on and stewarded these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase native communities. We commit to identifying racist practices and strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. All right, with that, I welcome everybody to the October 10th meeting of the Seattle Planning Commission. I cannot believe it's October. Welcome to any members of the public who are listening in. We are happy to make all of our commission meetings open to the public. Please note that we do not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body, and we encourage recommendations to elect the leaders that in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to these elected officials. This meeting today is obviously a hybrid meeting with some of us participating remotely in Seattle City Hall while we have others on the Microsoft Teams platform. I welcome everybody to the meeting, both virtual and in person. With that, we'll move on to and introduce our Color Brave Space norms. We have these at each of our meetings, and I would like to invite a fellow commissioner to choose and briefly speak to the relevancy of one of these Color Brave Space norms to our meeting agenda today. I'm going to go with somebody online to make sure we get good representation. And I am going to call one of our newer commissioners. So what we do is we have you pick one of these and just express us how you think it relates to what we're talking about today. I'm going to call on Matthew Malloy.
I'm in transit right now about two minutes.
Oh, okay.
A person, so maybe call on someone else.
Okay, I will call on Dylan Bosseki.
Okay, hello, folks. So this isn't related to what we're talking about today as we pick one of these and talk about what we're related to what we're talking about in today's meeting?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I would say maybe practice examining racially biased systems. And so just in kind of what we're hearing, what we're talking about today, taking it from a nuanced view and not kind of what we know, what we're used to, and what is easy, but kind of applying the lens of maybe was not necessarily our comfort zone, but is enhanced awareness of sensitivity to others and speaking for myself, at least somewhere without sort of maybe the privileged position that I've been lucky enough to grow up in. Yeah. So I'll say that.
You did a great job. I know how it can be really nerve wracking.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
And it's definitely happened to me before I've been called upon and I hadn't read the agenda in advance. And so having that moment of what are we talking about today? So we typically pause to see if anybody has any amendments or modifications to the Color Brave Space norms. And if not, I suggest we agree to all of them today. All right. So, sorry, I slowed us down, Olivia. On the agenda for today, we have two items. One is a follow-up presentation from our planning staff at Seattle on subarea planning from Jesse London and Amy Nguyen. We heard from them in August, or we heard from Erica Bush and Jesse in August. I think a lot of us were very interested in what we heard and had a lot of follow-up questions, but we didn't have enough time on the agenda to carry on that conversation. So we're going to pick that back up today. And then we have some commission business that we'll talk about once that ends. I think our commission meeting today is scheduled to end a little bit early and adjourned at 5:05 if we stay on track. So now that we're all warmed up, we're going to have our first official agenda item, our business of the day, which is to approve the September 26, 2024 minutes. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
Do you have motions?
Do you have motions?
Sure.
Andy seconded. Are there any changes or amendments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Any extensions? September 26th meeting minutes passed unanimously. Moving on to the chair's report, we have upcoming commission meetings. The next committee meeting is on Thursday, October 17th. It's the meeting of the Landes and Transportation Committee, and it's scheduled to meet from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. Those meetings typically happen over Teams. And then our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 24th from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. in the morning. That meeting will be hybrid with options for meeting in person in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall or using the online MS Teams platform. And with that, I will pass it over to agenda for some announcements and commission business.
Thanks, Michaela. Just a reminder for those listening in who may not have listened into a planning commission before, as Michaela noted, we have some commissioners joining us in the boards and commissions room here at Seattle City Hall and others joining online via MST. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for commissioners to ask questions and provide comment. Please do put your name in the chat to be breast sized by. Please do not put substantive comments in the chat as people who are calling into the meeting will not have the opportunity to see those. I will remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Planning Commission's YouTube channel for those individuals who are unable to attend the meeting and want to catch up and hear what the commission had to say today. We take public comment, we're very glad we public comment at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. I have not received any public comment via email, and at present, we do not have any members of the public joining us in the boards and commissions room. So we have no public comment for today. And I will now turn it over to Michaela to start us off on introductions. Please, after introducing yourself, please call on another commissioner. Feel free to ask staff if your home interface isn't giving you all the individuals on the call, and we will conclude with planning commission staff.
Good afternoon, Michaela Duffer and she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning and co-chair of the commission. And I will pass it to Matt. Am I right?
I'm Matt Hutchins. I'm an architect. I live in West Seattle. And let's see, I'm going to pass it. Am I right?
Hi, everyone, Lauren Squire, she/her. I work at King County Metro, leading the connecting to transit program, and I live by the Mount Baker Light Rail Station. Zio.
Hi, Zio Elvres, she/they pronouns. I live in Mike Center, Highland Creek, and I'm a designer.
Hi. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I work in advocacy and organizing for equity in youth sports and physical activity, and I live in the Central District.
Andy Denenberg, he-in, live in Northeast Seattle, and I teach at University of Washington in both public health and. Probably go to somebody on the screen.
Yeah. How about Dylan Bosseki?
Hey, you hear me?
Yes.
Dylan, Dylan Bosseki, I use he/him pronouns. I am an architect and urban designer. I work with Perkins Eastman downtown Seattle primarily on multifamily, high-rise, mid-rise, multifamily projects, and I live in the Central District. And let's see, we'll bring up the list here. Pass it on to Matthew.
Boy. Ah, yeah. Matt M. or Matthew for today, because we've got both Matts here. He/him pronouns. I work at the Queen Anne Beer Hall, substitute teach, and live in the Green Lake neighborhood. Special hello to our member of the public, Dylan Barker, the 2016 Lake Washington High School homecoming king who was a dear friend. I don't know how we ended up on the same meeting today, but I would like to pass it off to whoever hasn't gone. Is it Lauren? Have you gone yet?
I have, but Caleb hasn't.
Then to Caleb.
Thank you. Caleb Toole, he/him pronouns. Live in Beacon Hill, and I work at Ringer Scholars doing leadership development work with our middle and high school students. Not sure if there's who's next.
How about Rose?
I can hop in, yep. Yeah, Rose Luchelowitzin, pronouns, they/them. I'm up north in the part of Lipton Springs that is now part of North Gate for planning and funding reasons. And I work as a wetland biologist and permitting lead in my day job for Jacobs Engineering. I'll pass to Deanna.
Thanks, Rose. I'm Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill. I'm a multi-modal transportation planner. And I will pass it over to whoever the staff tells me should be next.
Sure, yeah, staff's time. Hey, everyone, Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns. Staff to the planning commission.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Hoy. Staff to the planning commission. I use he/him pronouns. Robin?
Robin McGonigal. I live on Bashan Island. I use she/they pronouns, and I am staff to the planning commission.
I'll wrap this up. My name is Vanessa Burdock. Thanks, everyone, for participating and attending today's meeting. I use she/her pronouns, and I am executive director to the planning commission. That'll turn it back to Michaela.
All right. With that, I think we're going to move on to our first primary agenda item, which is the subarea planning update. As I mentioned earlier, we are joined by Amy Nguyen and Jesse London from the Office of Planning and Community Development to update us on the subarea planning work that's underway. We were last briefed on this work in August and didn't have sufficient time on the agenda to accommodate the discussion, so we're very, very happy to have you guys back. Maybe some of you have attended some subarea planning update events that have happened since August. I have. So looking forward to our discussion. Welcome to both of you. We have an hour and 10 minutes for this agenda item, so take it away.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Jesse London, I'm an urban centers planner, OPCD. He/him pronouns.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Nguyen. I'm the deputy director with OPCD, supporting the regional centers team, and I'm the standard for Erica Bush today, really fantastic other counterpart to Jesse.
Great. Sharing screen now. Is it functional? Yes, okay. So we have a few updates that we're willing to provide today from all three plans, really. But we're going to start with going over something that came up towards the end of the last meeting, which was our time impending bullet workshops for the First Hill Capitol Hill plan and the downtown. And then we'll go into some focusing on a key housing and transportation questions that we thought would be useful to deepen with you all as a sort of consultation about some of our primary ideas that we're hoping to evolve in the planning process. So start. First, still Capitol Hill. So we've had quite a bit of engagement of work that's gone on over the past couple months, actually, well, even just prior to the last time we met in August. We had a handful of focus groups and pop-up events that were executed by the Capitol Hill Eco District, who have been our really invaluable on-the-ground resource in that neighborhood, now part of the city of metropolitan Seattle. Then we had our public workshop on the September 12th, as well as the survey that went out to really anybody who got the link, but that was stressed towards the residents and these people who generally spend a lot of time in the inner or around the subarea. Long group discussions. Okay, so there were four of those discussions, focus groups, and then a couple of interviews with PIS members and community researchers that we missed. But the focus groups were the what provided like some of the bigger takeaways, and those were organized around. And I'll send you the slides after. There are a lot of slides about the focus groups and workshops. I'm not going to let go over everything, but given that I'm providing you the slides afterwards, sort of just gives you the opportunity to read that in more detail later. So I'm sorry if you're like reading and something gets taken away from you while you're mid-sentence. But that's the reality of the situation. So, yeah, so there were four focus groups. They were broken up by these categories that were created by our racial equity toolkit process. So they were the environments, culture, economy, and housing, and transportation. We focused those roughly two-hour conversations on what those organizations were seeing in the neighborhood and their current experience with the subarea, and then as a follow-up on what their hopes and dreams for the subsequent 20 years were. What we see now, yeah, so I think that there was a pretty instant takeaway that, you know, as many of you are probably also thinking, that Capitol Hill and First Hill are quite, as the name perhaps implies, quite different subareas in our neighborhoods, as you say, in their own right. I would say that one of the bigger, high-level themes about Capitol Hill is a lot of its existing successes, things to celebrate, things to strengthen, to lean upon, whether that's it's a pedestrian environment or diversity of transportation options or general vibrancy. And perhaps somewhat conversely, First Hill having some more challenges with pedestrian experiences, particularly in some of its primary arterials, that maps in or in parts of 12th and what have you. And, yeah, but still having some of the same, I guess, successes with this diversity of transportation options and proximity to certain amenities, but not quite the same. And then the vision for the future, I think, throughout the subarea in both neighborhoods, there's a identified preference for a better accessibility in general for a wider range of age groups, both in terms of housing typology, but also in a level of comfort. I already mentioned the pedestrian experience in First Hill, but particularly some of the senior communities around there, those that spend a lot of times with that, you know, it's in the healthcare facilities. And of course, compassion throughout the subarea for unhoused population care for the people that need it. I think there was a little bit of like, sort of, you know, jealousy from First Hill Capitol Hills, like vibes, you know, I'm sure they use that word vibes a lot. You know, which is, which is fun. And I think I touched on like amenities in First Hill. We have like a amenity like score chart here. I think that perhaps not quite as robust in First Hill as some places in Capitol Hill, particularly, although not super unique to First Hill. Obviously, the regional and even national trends of grocery and pharmacy availability are quite troubling and pervasive in certain parts of this subarea in particular. And pretty well, I guess, pretty comprehensive support for Lit I-5 and very mixed responses to potential like gates. Even though, even though any potential streetcar expansion would have to take place in this neighborhood, I think it obviously impacts the efficacy of the First Hill streetcar, the streetcar programs, the Y in general. It was a, it was a topic of conversation that came up a lot and interesting, a lot of array and a lot of same. So what else? Let's see, 971 responses in the survey, fantastic, felt really good about that. That was about a month or so, like a month and a half. The subarea scored high in areas you might expect, restaurants and entertainment, a lot more like sort of play type of experiences, and scored reasonably well in basic needs and ten amenities. Housing volume and affordability came up quite a bit. I think there's a pretty high EMB energy at the workshop that came out through the survey responses as well. Let's skip the workshop. This was, I think, all of you were there. This was at the Seattle Central College Plaza on Broadway, pretty good attendance. I think you can see Amy and me getting, talking to there from a resident who was interested in the boundary of the subarea. We kind of broke it down into the older like urban village shapes just for the purposes of the conversation. That's not like, that's relevant anymore, obviously, but that's how we structured the discussion because the area just felt kind of big and had different sets of experiences that we wanted people to talk to and talk about. So in Capitol Hill, plenty of stress on public space, increasing volume, enhancing the existing spaces, activating them, and including public right-of-way streets in that conversation. In Pike Pine, I think, this conversation we've had at the city level many times before, it seems, that traffic, traffic calming, potential opportunities for pedestrianization of Pike and Pike, the Pike-Pine corridor at certain opportunistic times of year, two and times of year. Let's see, 12th probably had like the fewest comments. This is like pretty heavily institution-dominated in terms of land use. But I think, again, continuing the EMB energy, a lot of comments throughout all the areas, but in particular here about just wanting higher-volume housing than what they're seeing or what they perceive to be coming in the near to medium term, I think, apparently for the purposes of diversity of housing, but also affordability conditions as well. And for sale, you know, I mentioned the better pedestrian environment on some of those arterials, but also more compelling retail landscape is something that came up a lot. People not necessarily super enthused about tents that fill like the hospital retail spaces or like their aesthetic. I guess slightly more anecdotal illustration on my part, but the, okay, I'm going to move on to downtown. This was, this is going to be more focused strictly on the workshop, although we do have like a survey that's going to go out pretty soon. Actually, it might have gone out on Instagram like this morning, I think, on our OPCD account. But yeah, so this was a little bit meatier of a conversation because we actually are at the stage of the downtown plan where we have a vision statement and a set of themes and some policy ideas that we wanted feedback on. So this was at the luggage space over on Third. Let's see. So, yeah, similarly, the priorities were, there was a lot of support for, providing support for the unhoused population, a strong desire for an overall improvement in the sense of safety activations, a feeling of welcome, this idea that we should be spending as much time as energy on Third Avenue and a number of other places as we do on the water, for example, which was held up as an example on other locations. And that if we like, these are going to be important things if we're committed to this idea of vividing downtown to be more residential space than it has been historically. And also similar to Capitol Hill, that right-of-way space could stand to be, I'll talk about this a bit more later, but like more for people than it is for cars. This is one of those, this is where I don't have a ton to say, but there's a lot of relatively fine slides that I'm, including the presentation for you all to read for sake of transparency about like what, where we receive the most dots and our dot exercises and comments about each individual set of issues ranging from housing to the vision statement. So I'm not going to progress these perhaps while I was speaking rather than right now. So, okay, now transitioning into the more interactive, which we're going to go into the three subareas. We said beforehand that we were going to focus on housing and transportation questions within each of these. We'll revisit some of the topics that I just went over for First Hill, Capitol Hill, and downtown. We're going to start with North Gate just because we haven't talked about it yet. Once we're, I'm going to sort of set up some primary findings we've, we've seen in each of these topic areas, and then throw it to Amy to sort of pose the question that we want to set to you all and try to receive some feedback on. So, okay, North Gate. A bit more of a blank slate than, I mean, blank slate's not fair. There's plenty of people and things going on there right now, but at least comparatively to the other regional centers, a long way to go to me. Look like a, in the way that PSR's excellent tents, regional, central function. So, but still relatively dominated by renters compared to the rest of the city and plenty of development activity in the pipeline, but also a precipice of what our economists expect to be a pretty high residential displacement risk and commercial displacement risk, but we're going to, we're going to focus on residential differences in this conversation. And so I guess, and we know that because we, looking at the pro forma, the calculations that we've executed, that there's going to be, there's just going to have to be rent increases for market rate housing compared to like what people are paying now in that area. It's just going to be a reality without any accident of other interventions.
All right, well, we put a lot of thought into these questions, in part because I've heard you felt we talked a bit too much last time. So we really want to make sure that we get the opportunity to hear from you all. And so as Jesse kind of laid out that context, I really, understanding that that rent, lack of attainability in that above and below, what we really want to pose and get feedback from you all on is that North Gates existing residential population, that relatively high risk of displacement, however, given its lower density relative to other census and temporary slowdown and redevelopment, we have an opportunity to pursue preventative programs. Internally, we've discussed a couple of approaches, one being using the proximity of North Seattle College to encourage training for higher-paying jobs, encouraging relocation of directly displaced tenants to housing within the regional center, and enable current renters to purchase their apartments. Yeah.
But then the next is.
Yes.
So we can pause here.
So we want to kind of just open it up to you all. And again, this is a discussion, conversation prompt, but if you feel like there's another direction that you take it, please feel free to do that as well.
All right. I need to get my chat box open again. So if folks would like to put their names in the chat, I don't think everybody here in the room is, has a computer. So if you're in the room and you want to enter the chat, maybe take your name plate and turn it on outside. Let the name type out. Okay. A little bit of that. It's something like that. It just waved at me. Okay, a little bit of that, it's something like that. They're just waving me. So thank you for that overview. I know that we have a couple of folks on the commission who live up in that area. And one of them is not here today, Jamie Strobel, and so I'm sure that she would be here to provide some input. But we do have Rose on the line who is technically a resident of this sub area. Anybody? Zia? Matt has his name right up. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask for a little more context. What does the existing affordable housing situation look like, especially with like city or county home properties in the sub area?
Yeah, that's a good question. So there are a few notable affordable housing projects that are actively in development now. So what's, what's called the Northgate Apartments, which is a sign of pretty old and old school like apartments just north of the former mall site is, was purchased by the housing authority and is being redeveloped as a mostly affordable project in the lower affordability ranges of such a nice project. And that they'll prop up a little bit with some market rate housing side of it, but I think it takes the number of units. So that's why, that's, yeah, this, the exact size escapes me. But then there's also one on the, the King County owns the, the bus terminal site by the, by the light rail. And on the east end of that, there are going to be two projects, northern of which is under development now. And that is that bridge housing affordable project. If it's, and then the one south of that is much farther down. So that's between the two of them, you know, definitely into the hundreds of units. That's the, there's, there's a senior housing project. I don't remember if it's in the sub area, but nearby. It's subsidized and it's, that's all I'm coming up with off the top of my head.
Is the one that the city just bought, you know, the one that's, you can see it in the freeway kind of right by, like in between Best Buy and the mall. Those older apartments.
Yes.
Zia, you're next.
Yeah, I think my question is maybe related, which is on the second point in your options that you discussed internally. It seems like the relocation of directly displaced tenants is going to be dependent on the expansion of affordable housing in the district. And I know we've heard previously, specifically, I think in the context of downtown, that the city sees the best opportunities for expansion of that on the publicly owned land in these sub areas. And so I guess wondering, it sounds like there's a few opportunities that are already in motion and wondering about like, what are the sort of future thinking development opportunities in that vein? Or what are ways and could support development for directly displaced tenants?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. The, so the people that were displaced by the Seattle Housing Authority project farther north. We've, we're looking into whether it's possible for them to be placed into the bridge housing project of the King County site. But because we know that the, that the, that the bridge housing project is having trouble placing people. And we're hearing that that's because they didn't build any parking. I need to confirm that with like, if we're actually managing a project, but that's, so it's a little speculative. But yeah, I think, I think that that is kind of the genesis of why we provided this option is because it's just not, as is the case with many affordable housing projects, like not practical to expect, even though you're going to like give them the, the first offer to come, to come back there, that like the years or whatever that pass, that it's still going to be of interest to them if they're already in our city, but somewhere else in the city or outside of the city. So, so I think that's kind of what we're after. I don't, I don't really, I don't know if I can predict the scale of opportunity to continue to do that or to pursue that like in the immediate future. But that's our hope to like try to explore that.
All right, Dylan, good stuffy.
Yeah, hey guys, question regarding, it's just the, so the point that you guys make about enabling renters, potentially enabling current renters to purchase their apartments. And related to that, does, has the city looked at or considered or, you know, purchasing the existing lots existing naturally occurring, occurring to affordable housing? Is that something that is feasible? I know that the density up there is, is what the city is looking to increase. And so that might be against these goals of increasing density in some respects. But you know, beyond just building affordable housing, has the city looked at purchasing existing buildings and holding on to those to accommodate existing residents? They had a follow-up question after that.
I would say that there is certainly an interest in the city for many departments to look into land banking. And the part of this is there's going to be future opportunities, particularly with ST3. So we're actively right now looking at what strategic real estate acquisitions could be put into place along ST3, but also our colleagues at OH have, we have many different threads that's come up in our Apple candidate range. Development groups from within our Apple Development, to ensure our grantees have pushed us with the city to look into this as well. But I, I want to, I want to be very intentional on saying that it takes real political will and investment to make that happen. And I want to just really name and call out that communities, BIPOC communities have been asking us to lean into this strategy for quite, for many years with our anti-displacement strategies.
All right, Andy.
Oh, and you're using proximity of North Seattle College to encourage training. What are you able to do? What does the college have? What does the city do? Who can actually do that? It sounds like a good idea as a long-term investment, but who has to do what for that to happen?
I mean, I think it just does a stepping in a, but what I've heard from, from some of the technical analysis coming in is these higher paying jobs are, are UW, they're medical jobs. And so this is with the UW Medical Campus expansion.
In Northgate.
In Northgate. So we're talking about, that's a part of why this is a regional center is. These are good paying jobs. So if the people who live there, 82% renters, if we know that the development pipeline is set up to price them out, how do we set the people who live there access into those well-paying jobs that we know are guaranteed to come on board? Rather than, you know, creating another first hill experience where first hill becomes a medical campus where people come into work and leave. So I think that's a part of some of the how do we, I think that you're asking the right question, but the opportunity is there. And I don't think it's, would it be exclusively within the planning department to.
Is it the college leadership needs to be talking with you to work it out? Is that what you're thinking?
I think would, would be a combination of seeing what kind of, outside of our great elected officials could perhaps put some pressure on higher ed and maybe think about specific, we've had, the city of Seattle have had partnerships with the Seattle Colleges. A great example, Seattle Promise, but maybe a specific kind of program could be developed that we can create a pipeline through.
And if you don't mind me just jumping off of that, you know, our Seattle Colleges are a real treasure in the city. They have lifted up so many people and helped so many different people get connected and trained into new career pathways. I know that Seattle Central has a relationship, I think, with the nursing program and PAC Med and some of the facilities up there. And so this is not, this is really within their lane of expertise and what they do really well. So I think that's a really fantastic idea. In particular, not just providing people with homes that they can afford, but bringing their wages up so that they can also afford a home that they can live in. So.
Are the colleges independent entities or are they part of the city who actually runs the college?
Seattle, I am not, it's not the city, but there's a, they operate the Seattle Colleges together as a system. And there's eight president. So that's about all I know. I know they rely on a lot of state funding for their operations, but they're, they're totally independent from the city of Seattle. But they do have to come in for major institution master plan developments. And oftentimes those are good opportunities, whole levers in terms of getting public benefit out of that. And full disclosure, I say that as the co-chair of the Seattle Central Community Development Advisory Committee. I think we're now a DAC and not a CAC. They have zero money. They're desperately underfunded, but they have a mission alignment with the city in terms of kind of like in particular helping folks get, get training and retraining and into new job pipelines.
Really, really not for profit?
Wikipedia says they're public and they're governed by a board of trustees appointed by the governor.
Thank you.
So that's, that's not for profit, non-profit.
Public, public, yeah. Public and private, yeah.
Thank you.
So we have, the next folks in line would be Rose.
Yes, so I have several thoughts related to housing in my neighborhood. The, the first of which is more of a knowledge, a lack of knowledge question on my part about the forces that are driving the housing pipeline to be almost exclusively rentals. It seemed like based on the bullets on the first slide, like I'm guessing it has something to do with cost. But the reason I bring it up, the context behind the question is because it's my understanding that when you build rental units, the requirements for them are often not as strict or as desirable as for say a condo. And I'm not sure if that's like incorrect, but that's my understanding. And so if, if we're talking about like schemes to enable renters to purchase their apartments, but what's being built is intended for rental, I have some concerns about like the quality of housing that we're encouraging people to purchase. And then also along that line, I, I do think that, and this is maybe a controversial opinion, but I think the Northgate area in particular, and area around medical campuses are likely to always have a need for some portion to be devoted to the rental market. And I'd actually also seek the city, I, I think it'd be great for the city to consider what to do to enable both like affordable housing and affordable rentals, given that a lot of the medical profession, you know, there's like traveling nurses who need places to stay. It would be great for them to stay by the places where they work rather than having to be far away. So, you know, considering what's driving the high rentals, how to keep it affordable and also how to promote ownership.
Thank you. Next up is Lauren.
Thanks, Rose. I was eager to hear your thoughts as a homeowner in a regional center. I don't have direct responses to these questions, but for me, when I think about Northgate, I think about the precipitous like drop-off that the urban center line reflects between intense density and single family. And I know that these boundaries are set, you know, be like by entities beyond the city of Seattle. But for me, I can't really get past this, you know, we're shoving so much of our density in such a small land area with, you know, I, Northgate, Maple Leaf was one of the first places I lived in Seattle because it was a place I could get an affordable rental. You know, and I'd walk down a street without sidewalks to the Northgate Transit Center and catch a bus downtown before the light rail opened. And so, you know, I'm thinking about those streets without any sidewalks, without any drainage. And then you, you cross this invisible boundary and then, you know, you're at Thornton Place and you're looking up at seven or eight story buildings. So, you know, I really support the vision of Northgate being this, this thriving, mixed-use, transit-oriented community. But I'm just kind of wondering about, just about that invisible line and that, and that boundary of, you know, within the boundary, we have regional event center, regional medical campus, higher education institution. And, you know, speaking as King County Metro that does own the land at the doorstep of the light rail station, the future vision of that for equitable transit-oriented development is great. But for me, I kind of just can't get past this regional center kind of planning effort with, without thinking of like how kind of like out of scale it is in its surrounding area. And so I just, I had to refresh my memory about what the comprehensive plan kind of looks like. You know, there's the dark blue regional center surrounded by yellow, which is urban neighborhood with Maple Leaf potentially being a new neighborhood center. And then across the freeway, kind of the urban center is along 99 there. But, you know, I think that we get into this like constricted supply of like, yeah, we're going to, we're going to put all this development capacity around light rail and it's, it's going to outpace, you know, the rental market that's in the area. But then you have the other end of the barbell, which is exceedingly unaffordable, single-family homes completely surrounding this area. And so to me, that like kind of is at the heart of this issue. As we see the transition of like exactly what we want to see, right? Which is dynamic, mixed income, mixed-use communities around transit. But for me, you know, like north of 85th, these places that we have annexed into the city of Seattle that don't have sidewalks, that a former mall, you know, with huge blocks. So those are just kind of some of the thoughts rattling around my head. And I would just be interested in Amy or Jesse's response or if that sparks any thoughts from other commissioners of just thinking about, yeah, I don't know, Northgate has just been for me always such an anomaly as a regional center surrounded by a very low density, lot of need for investment and basic infrastructure, kind of single-family zone. So to me, that's kind of like the context that we're having this conversation in. So I just wanted to pull back and have a more of a systemic kind of look at Northgate's context.
Yeah, so actually Erica brings this up fairly often, particularly the tapering idea. Strive around the edge and we, we haven't lined up like in terms of resources, like exactly how our, what our zoning implementation program is going to look like after we adopt these plans. But I mean, I, I imagine that, because we're, because we're going to work on other plans after this. So we'll, so we'll be around and they'll, I imagine we'll be part of that process, you know, regardless of who takes, whether it's, whether it's us directly or if it's like our organization or what I'm going to say. I think that that will, that idea will, will like live on through us, but I don't, I don't really, you know, obviously we, there's, as far as what ends up in the zoning legislation, if there's a big, or there between, absent, you know, other, the executive process of it.
What I'd add is Lauren, it's an excellent point and that's why we love the planning commission. Please say that. We need to be thinking, well, we are, it's not working fine. We can appeal the regional growth center boundaries and we know that these boundaries are dictated by housing and job counts. That's the system that we plan within. But what, what about that experience? What is the human experience? And so that's, that's where I put it back all onto here too. And I think Vanessa probably shared with planning commission, just the kind of the next phases and conference and plan. I think this, we love what you just said, Lauren, registered in the next kind of series of open houses where additional draft zoning maps are going to be released and saying like, okay, well, if this is what's posed here, what does that look like when you are a person who is walking along that side, the absence of sidewalk and that experiencing that transition? I think it matters, yeah.
May I invite some, or you were going to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at the map here and it's, I just remember living up there in like Roosevelt. Roosevelt's an important corridor, Northgate's an important corridor. And I'm just kind of remembering those growth alternatives, you know, from kind of the early days before the draft plan. you know, from kind of the early days before the draft plan of like, what would it look like if we had our commercial corridors be able to stand on their own? And then kind of have this tiering, you know, for those that are, you know, familiar with the Northgate area. You know, there's like, I mean, a Tilly, but like there's, there's Roosevelt and then there's kind of, yeah, I just, I think that there's more, uh, yeah, kind of nuance and gradation that we can, to Jesse's point, like layer into our zoning code to be like, cool. If regionally Northgate is taking so many jobs and so many residents, like in the region, like what is Seattle doing to like come around that to like create more of a gradation of scale? Because, yeah, I just don't think that there should be, you know, a single-family house without sidewalks and like a gravel shoulder. And then like, you know, I love, I love Thornton Place, I love the water quality channel, but that's just like, they're right next to each other and they're so different. And, um, if we're going to funnel all this investment, I think that it should kind of be this radiating, kind of, um, yeah. Anyway, go ahead.
And that also reflects reality, right? Cause like all the people in the single-family currently neighborhoods are going to that place or ideally walking there or biking there, maybe driving there right now.
Or they're not walking because it's not a.
Yeah, and it seems like, like the, the livability and like the, the resilience of the businesses that establish themselves there is as dependent on people who live around that zone area getting there as it is on like people taking light rail because they live next to it.
And if you think about our comments on the comprehensive plan, I think this relates really well to some of the struggles that we were talking about, about arterials of sort of like having multifamily buildings clustered really, really close to the arterials and the single-family zoning starting right behind it. And how we were sort of like push that into the neighborhoods a little bit, feather that in. Focus on these arterials as places for businesses and the walking and the community interaction that happens. And I think Bellevue, if, if you've ever been to Bellevue and you've ever driven through it and you realize that one second you're in a single-family zone and the next second you are next to a high-rise building, it's a very weird experience. And I think, you know, if you, if you can contrast that to my neighborhood where I live in, in Capitol Hill, there are, there are apartment buildings, there are lower-income apartment buildings, higher-income apartment buildings. There are townhomes, there are converted Victorians that are now apartment buildings right next to, you know, a multimillion dollar, single-family home. Like these, these housing structure types can coexist. And you can kind of have this natural densification outside of the commercial core that is still a really livable neighborhood. Um, and so I think that there are, are examples right here in our own city of what Northgate could be in the long run. Um, but if we, if we don't, if the zoning maps, land use patterns don't accommodate that, we're setting ourselves up to fail. Um, and we're setting our, these business districts with, that Northgate's also a business district. And like CEO said, like, um, thinking through how you make those great places for everybody to live and move about. And people choose to walk instead of drive or ride their bike. Like that's, that's the kind of Northgate I think beyond vision. And there's so much possibility there. Um, so.
This would be a beautiful segue opportunity into my next.
Yes.
Esef nine.
We have lots of folks on the queue. My aim out of the queue. I can take my name out too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it was going to also be about Northgate, so.
Okay.
Just wanting to make the most of everybody's time. And thank you again for coming back. And it wasn't that you spoke too much last time, it's that we didn't set up enough time. So just with 25 minutes left, wanting to, I don't know how many more questions you have to pose to the group.
We're not getting to those. I was like, six is too many. Be ready for one for each session.
This one's my favorite and it is also in Northgate.
And then that's your first, okay.
The only person I didn't check in with was Dylan Boszaki. Dylan, are you comfortable with us moving on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have that much to go through. Yeah, please do.
Okay. So speaking of connectivity in Northgate, you all stewed leave, pointed out that the regional center, uh, has pretty, uh, pretty long blocks, pretty more pedestrian experience, generally missing sidewalks, minimal crossing opportunities. Uh, and, uh, but, but what I want to focus on here is the size of the blocks and, and, and what that means, which is a, a, a limited network for really all modes of transportation. But, uh, I, you know, walking is, is our, and biking are, are our focus here, but, but certainly for, for cars too. But, uh, one of the uh, bigger ideas that we've, uh, been kicking around is trying to follow through on improving those connections, uh, through these existing privately owned blocks, which has been discussed in a, in a number of previous planning efforts for the over the past 30 years. Including twice in 2013, which is my favorite detail of this slide. But our, our, our idea is, and I'm going to step on these. Our idea, yeah, these are two, these are the two 2013. So, um, our idea is actually, because we've been receiving a number of, of some requests and through, from developers throughout the center, particularly east of the freeway, that we have an opportunity here potentially to, uh, to leverage that, that desire for that increased density for a private, uh, build out of said desirable network. As there are a number of different permutations of this that we could pursue uh, in terms of like, not only how big of an area to include in that, do you include west of the freeway? Do you include the medical campus area? Obviously, there's like a really little strange, like slim uh, piece of meridian that connects to that, that might not make sense for this idea. But, um, uh, you know, also like, uh, we have to make like a nexus case for tying what we are trading in terms of, um, density allocation for the intensity or cost of the, uh, allocation of the public space. Uh, so that becomes a little easier to make that case when it, when it's, you know, something smaller, like just something that's just for pedestrians, rather than a whole with the road that includes two lanes for cars over or what have you. So I'm, I'm, there are some risks associated with this plan. There are like, you know, some blocks that have like several different owners on them. So if seven, if five of those are redeveloped and two don't, what happens? Uh, you know, uh, but, but it is something that, uh, hasn't really been attempted in the previous plans to, to try to regulate this so strictly through the land use code. Um, and I'm curious to hear if this is something anybody has seen or feels is worth, it's more and more pursuing aggressively. Uh, this, this is really something that both us, us and our two-person S team that works on this plan have been really interested in the best.
I have a question. Can we start with questions before we move on to comments? Are you talking about like unvacating streets?
Breaking the super block.
Yeah, yeah. That's a fair distinction to, to make. Um, that is possibly a route, but it is a lot harder to do than more of like an Eastman situations, because it becomes a lot more expensive on our side. And then, uh, the, harder to like convince our entire, like, you know, for, so it's awesome.
Not necessary to do what you're talking about?
No, no. Um, it's, it's a bigger ask on the private developers in some ways because they're, they'll have like standards to maintain privately in the long term.
With an Eastman?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So Matt Hutchins was very quick to say he has comments.
By God, yes. Absolutely do this.
Yeah.
Uh, once, um, once we dedicate any land to a car, it is permanently dedicated to the car. We could see that at Pike Place Market. There is absolutely no way that we can get cars out of the market, even though it is one of the most vibrant pedestrian environments we have. If you really want to build, uh, a pedestrian zone that is fueled by all these great other, you know, density and transit, all these things, we cannot let the car in in the first place. I would move heaven and earth to maintain, to like pre-establish a pedestrian network at the onset as precondition to development, uh, because otherwise this opportunity will not manifest.
Yeah, I agree. I was just gonna, this is not the exact same, uh, context, but I worked with the city in Massachusetts and the state of Massachusetts has a requirement around the public waterfront access where when parcels get redeveloped, they have to facilitate public access to the waterfront. And, which is a great initiative. And I think we can think about these sort of mid-block crossings as like water access maybe in this analogy. Um, the downside of it is that it depends on like when parcels get developed. And so you end up with a fragmented system potentially in perpetuity. Um, and so I think, thinking about like, are there like flagship crossings that the city would want to be more invested in? Or to think about like facilitating early on as a concept to like build excitement around this? Um, because I do think that there's a chance that like some developers sit on some of these parcels forever and you end up with like a really lovely pedestrian street that like ends at an empty lot or like the side of a auto business and then like doesn't continue or picks up on the other side. And so thinking about like, how do you establish continuity early on? To sort of do this out with developers, I think is going to be important.
Yeah, uh, that's a good point. Our, our, uh, our like ideal longer block would be, there's, there's a group of office parks like south of the metro site. It's, it's immediately adjacent to the station. They're super long from north to south. And there's an existing almost grid-like system that you can kind of see just like east of that as you get into the more single-family parts of the neighborhood. Uh, so there, there is like an easy narrative there. So like we are like reconnecting some existing grid or, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that's, that's kind of like the slam dunk location and it's, it's, as you get farther away from that, it becomes harder. The Simon site is actually, uh, you know, most, the vast majority of it is already entitled and they have like a very, uh, you know, usage like idea of like, you, once you're in it, you can walk around, but like the, the, you know, the external component of it is more air entry. It ingress, the ingress is very car.
Designed for that purpose.
Thornton Place also has sort of a strollerable, Burton Creek. I can't even think of that development. But it, it has its own vibe as well of kind of come and explore and look at the water features and come and sit at the restaurant and have a beer. I think there's some assets to build off of there. I'm sorry, I'm not in line. Um, Rose, you are next.
Hey, yeah. And my comment is going to be based on the fact that I walk and drive everything on this map like almost every day. So yes, yes, I love the idea of more pedestrian connections. However, in recognition of the limited, uh, funding that the city has as a resident, I'm definitely more behind make sure that you're putting in sidewalks where there are none and that you're looking at strategic crossings of I-5. Cause like, for example, before the North Seattle Community College Pedestrian Bridge, I like never walked across the highway because it was sketch. Like you did not want to, you were going to get bulldozed by cars. It was, it was bad news. So I think like, if you want this to be a vibrant area, you need to keep exploring ways to make crossing the I-5 corridor desirable to pedestrians and cyclists. And I'd also like to, and this might be the biologist in me, um, maybe consider doing something other than grid, like meandering walkways, walkways with interests, twists, like points of interest, like using the Thornton example, I think is a great one, where it's not just a, you go in a straight line from point A to point B, like there are features there for you to look at and it's just more engaging. So, uh, yeah, that, that, that's my overall comment.
All right, Dylan, no. Yeah, yes.
Next?
Yes, you are.
Yes, just, just a, a quick one. Uh, folks are kind of, are, I'm reiterating what folks have already said. And, um, which just was, was up there, uh, at the Crackin' Ice Complex, uh, about a week ago. And it was really, it's been a while. I was really impressed just by that particular example of connection back to the station through this sort of what seemed like an impossible wall to navigate with, with the Northgate and with construction and with parking lots and with. But their connection that they've built out was actually really, is by, on my first time, it was really easy to navigate. It was great. And I think it's a great example of kind of what can be done with kind of utilizing these sort of super blocks and still be able to connect back through these blocks. And so I, I think the idea of holding up some examples of what's already been done, uh, to help sell this idea. Cause it's, it's, it's spot on and Matt's point about like, this is an opportunity to, uh, create a pedestrian network and, and where the cars are already out, uh, is, it's, it's a great opportunity. So definitely reinforce it. And, um, they've done some pretty good work with the Crackin' Ice Complex already.
All right, Matt Malloy.
Yeah, uh, I was trying to pull up the map here. My computer, but internet's slow. I think one thing to keep in mind is like connecting it to like the Seattle Greenway Network too. Cause I know there's a north and south on the other side of the freeway. And I think there's a proposed north and south on the east side of the freeway. And biking east to west across Northgate isn't ever the best experience. I know, um, the main drag, you have to go onto the freeway, there's no bike lanes. And you have to either go south to 92nd across the freeway, which is nice, or take the pedestrian bridge. But that involves going through the mall. And then north, there's nothing until 130th, which is under construction. So I don't know, incorporating a connection between those two greenways, I think would be a valuable asset too.
Anybody else have any kind of comments?
More questions.
What do you, do you want to skip a special?
Uh.
Only get one more question.
Make it good.
Okay.
You might be talking about downtown.
Favorite question. I'm, I'm trying to remember.
If you take us down this path, you got a couple of books of living Capitol Hill and we'll never get off this topic. I can't facilitate this off of talking about my neighborhood. Downtown?
You can do downtown.
That's what Lauren said. What are the folks' preference?
Housing or transportation? We have one question.
Transportation.
I just, I kind of want to think about like, what is the future of downtown? Because I think that this effort is like really key in defining that in a post-COVID context, you know? And, um, we've talked about downtown being the 15-minute-est of all neighborhoods. And just interested if you could kind of glean at a high level, like what, what are the gaps that need to be plugged in? What are you hearing in order to, to achieve that? You know, because I think our understanding of a central business district from the past is, is gone. I mean, hopefully, you know, and hopefully we're moving towards a more mixed use, a kind of all 24-hour neighborhood in downtown. So just kind of maybe you could speak to the, to the levers, levers in the regional planning effort that could move us in that direction.
Um, okay. So that is up nicely that. So, uh, as you, some of you may have seen in the DAP and other planning or the downtown action plan and at other, um, efforts. And I guess I referenced earlier that the pivot to making this a more residential neighborhood is, is very much part of, part of the plan. And, uh, there are a number of obstacles to that. And actually this is kind of related to our first still Capitol housing question also, um, which, which is that the ton, a ton, a ton of like the recent supply is, uh, over the past 10 years or so, uh, which in downtown's case is a lot. And in Capitol's also, um, it, it's a overwhelmingly studio and one-bedroom units, which poses a, uh, another type of lack of diversification problem. Which poses a, another type of lack of diversification problem. That might affect the, the long terms, the economic sustainability of the whole venture. So. One of the things that we're trying to field stronger ideas about is how to. How to avoid that. Medium term, you know, like five to 10-year period. There are obviously like. Also diversity implications in terms of like the types of people that move into those units. But also the ranges of affordability, the cost per square foot of those units tend to be. Quite a bit higher. Like the other points that Erica wanted to make. Yes, it's growing quickly and. All right, so. Did you want to summarize these questions? Yeah, that, that, that's, that's basically what we're trying to put in front of you. And we've kind of worded that in a few different ways here, but like. Exploring how to incentivize that or disincentivize the opposite or to. You know, or is it more just like such a demand side issue of? People, the kind of people who would want larger units or family-sized units. Don't want to live down kind of first place. So like what is the, you know, they're not going to. Absorb the. Two-bedroom, three-bedroom units that we want to add to improve our participation issue. Does this, does this make sense? Yeah. So that, that's what I'm.
Uh, I'm going to kick us off. So I work in housing and so I've. Got feelings around this. It's like, it's a chicken and a egg thing. You're never going to have the schools. You are never going to have the grocery stores. You are never going to have the play spaces. You're never going to have a downtown for raising kids. If those families do not have apartments and condos that they can. Put their families in and where they can live in and they can grow. And so you've got to start somewhere. And as we're reimagining. How we, how we build out this downtown and over the next hundred years, this is the time to put those in place. We've seen what the market has delivered. The market at this point, what we're seeing in the rental statistics. Is that we are overbuilt on studios and one-bedrooms. As a result, in neighborhoods like Capitol Hill, the rents in those types of units are actually in some cases. Lower than what some affordable housing providers are trying to market their units for. And so that's, if there's ever been a sign that we've got enough of those, I think we've reached that point. But. Because, because there's not that demand, you're probably going to need incentives or some kind of program. To facilitate and encourage the creation of those kinds of units. And this is where I get a little uninformed, but you guys are really smart people in OPCD. Who've thought a lot about incentives and how you can tinker with the FAR and high-rise buildings to try and. Bring to the table something to the developers that will get them to bring in the two or the three, even four-bedroom units. But this commission, since I think 2014, has been advocating for most, for family-sized units. I hear, I work countywide on housing issues. I can hear it everywhere. If we are going to put any kind of like subsidy or accommodation, I think that's the place that we start in terms of bringing families downtown. Families downtown do exist. There, it's not like we don't have any. In fact, one of them just started working for you all at OPCD. Tiana and Martin is, you know, he walks his kid to a daycare. From his place down in the Chinatown International District. It's possible. It's just a hard, it's hard. And I think if we can succeed on the family front, we will have turned the corner in downtown because if families are choosing to move downtown. It has meant that we've created a place where you can raise family. So. Incentives and, or, and/or mandatory requirements. That drive those units, I think is where we start. Next up is Matt. Matt Hutchins?
Uh, yeah, as, as a parent, it's, it's schools and parks. And, and, you know, I don't know that downtown is ever going to have. You know, the sort of, you know, land available to do either of those things unless. It really comes from how we proceed with the Lit I five. In that if that really becomes major realignment for public amenities. You know, that there is a downtown high school, that there are downtown elementary school and granted, that's awfully complex. But that's the, that's the unlock. There isn't otherwise, you know, uh, yeah. People, families with kids are not going to move downtown en masse. So. And so I think the sort of like mandatory. Allocation of family-sized units and skyscrapers tends to be, you know, doesn't necessarily. Fulfill the policy goal, you know, because then it's probably, you know, three Amazon employees that, that live in that three-bedroom. As opposed to, as opposed to family.
Not that it's income restricted, right? If you restrict the income on it, you can, you can achieve a double landing.
Right. So I think, but I think it's also then looking at where the closing resources are in the other neighborhoods. And I think building up more families. Family apartments in, in those areas rather than making downtown be the, the torch that is kind of like, you know, sort of. Swim upstream against its sort of, you know, natural demands on land prices to provide spaces that are. Just inherently. Hard to fill. So.
Can it be a both and?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think it always can be. Yeah. But I think that's why Lit I five, I think it had really high hopes for that.
All right, Matt Malloy.
Yeah, great. Matt's been a leg. Conversation to Lit I five as well, but I think it's also important to note, like we've missed opportunities in the past to develop those parks, like the waterfront. Is a great tourist destination, but it could have been more. The Seattle Commons Project way back when could have been something that drew people to live downtown more. I think there's opportunities like by the stadiums too, if we expand our definition of downtown. There's a lot of Luther Development there or the, um, the King County Metro or the King County like jail redevelopment area. Asset of opportunity for park space. But yeah, you need those parks and those schools. And also it doesn't have to be right downtown, like in the surrounding area of downtown Queen Anne, Capitol Hill, till. International District, like it can be along the exterior and still get families to live downtown if they can commute to those places too. So it doesn't have to be. There's not a ton of space, but we can make something happen where there is opportunities.
Dylan.
Yeah, I mean, echo the previous comments. Getting families close is a good start. Have a kiddo that I've brought downtown for years and, you know, like Michael's point, it's, it's hard. But it's also rewarding and enjoyable and it's. I do feel like with the waterfront, actually, the redevelopment is wonderful for kids, especially with the Overlook Walk that just opened up. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity to encourage and share with families of what opportunities are down there, especially with some of the works that happened down at the piers. The small-scale soccer field that's down there. I think that's a great thing to market to families to just to get them present downtown. Even, you know, not necessarily living there, but just to get families to come and visit is a great start. And increasing that. And then I will just, just a comment on high-rise development. And working on a project where there is an incentive to provide three-bedroom units. Which typically not provided in like a high-rise. Capacity, but. The thing with that is that they also are required to provide a place base in the, in the unit. So you're not getting schools. But you are getting a place base along with these, these three-bedroom units. And it's a, it was a no-brainer for the developer to get to an extra feat of height, get an extra story if they built out these three-bedroom units. So I would just say there's just some incentives on the books that are working to build these units. Along with the required place base onsite. So some things are working in the right direction.
Okay, we've got two more and then we'll just, you will have the last word. So Lauren?
Yeah, this one's great. Um, yeah, just thinking about, you know, what we know about downtown and thinking of Yesr Terrace as one of the long, long time. You know, mixed income, like integrated housing developments, you know, I don't, I can't really speak to. Now with this redevelopment, but thinking about Bailey Gasser and thinking about Yesr Terrace and then thinking about. The older adults and the elders that live in the CID, like what are the ways to, to, to support around where there are kind of the beginnings of these. Family multi-generational supportive, like what, what does that look like to create kind of special emphasis areas, if you will? What you said, Matt Malloy, around the jail and thinking about being strategic with King County Civic Campus redevelopment. They are really looking to leverage the. The development potential that they have there. And what would that look like for King County to pivot? From office space needs, obviously, to serving the needs of people in King County, you know, looking at the, the footprint of public space that the county owns in downtown. And, you know, what does that look like? You know, to, to leverage that kind of, that land ownership, civic land ownership. And then kind of thinking about the other end of town. With Bell Town and Seattle Center and Uptown and, you know, kind of finding those areas with those assets, you know, knowing that, 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 you know, we're never going to plop a park. Into downtown in the same way, but like we're, we're, they're beginning to do things. And so what could, what could strategic kind of place-based zoning and emphasis around? The assets that we have now look like? Yeah, and just the, the last piece of that, you know, we hear about preschools that exist in parks. What about? Preschools and kindergarten and elementary schools that existed in an urban environment and like what? You know, I don't know that Seattle Public Schools is necessarily a thought partner and advocate on that lens, but you could, you could see fam, you know, families doing. Like that would be an education if I were to have kids, which I'm not going to. That I would love to see kids existing safely in an urban environment and the values that that means and being on the street and the safety of that. Yeah. So anyway, just thinking big around, you know, what we have and maybe ways to do things differently.
Yeah, I think, I think your related comment, just if, if it seems implausible to locate these services downtown. Can we think about the linkages from these sort of sub-areas of downtown to resources that are like just on the other side of that line? Because there are schools downtown, there's preschools, there's a charter school, I think in the CID, like. They exist. And so thinking about focusing, if not like development intent, then at least like better. Facilitating ways that people might get their kids to and from these places, like. Market is an incredible resource to the city, but we talk about there being no grocery stores downtown, which is like. There's a, there are things that people aren't well-connected, I think, are on people's. Sort of paths through the city. And so. If it, if we think it's not plausible for there to be a school or for, for, you know, three-bedroom apartments and high-rises to not be the solution, can we at least? Help people get from the native point B better? Because. The benefit of downtown is supposed to be that it's so well-connected to all of the parts of the city, but sometimes it feels like that's not. Totally the pedestrian experience of downtown.
Yeah, shout out to Imagine Greater Downtown, the People's Streets and Public Spaces Network, the Water Streets, the View Streets, like what if we double down on that and really built our. Code and zoning around those types of places.
Well, I hope this conversation today gave you guys a sense for why we wanted you to come back and why we felt like. We just didn't get to change the say enough last time. Because here we are and you didn't get through all of your questions again, but we really appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for your feedback.
Yeah. If there are future moments where you would like us to be engaged, don't hesitate to think about us as a resource. Sometimes we think about doing retreats in neighborhoods. I know last year we talked about retreating up in the North Gate. We, we did.
And last year we retreated to CID.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the year before that, the rain year.
Yeah.
Yeah, if first till Capitol Hill, like as it comes along, like I think that could be like a whole work session with this group. So as that progresses, we'd love to engage and. Be in neighborhoods with you all too.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Sammy, thanks, Justin.
Yeah, I think one of your apps.
Joe Ward.
He said apps. What apps do we have? Do you provide appetizers?
So appreciate it.
Yeah, there are apples, granola bars, chocolate and from what?
Well, we are on schedule. So yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa with some mission business. Related to the budget. And discussion on responses to the Invest in Seattle School agenda.
Great. Advancing the slide. Thank you very much. All right, three things I'd like to talk about. First of all is just to applaud you all for. Commission of Invest in Seattle's Future. The paper that we worked on, you all worked on for about two and a half months. With the hope of helping inform and influence the city's. The budget, the proposed budget that City Council is currently. Looking at and considering potential amendments to. We sent that just to let you know who, who that, who I've sent it out to. So all council members, also the EDI Director, Jenna Franklin, the OH Director. As well as staff at, to the Council Central Staff, staff in the Mayor's Office, obviously OPCD. And then some other individuals who had approached me. Over the past summer, just wondering what the commission thought about. When there was a proposed amendment regarding. Curb in EDI funding. So shared that out with those folks, shared it out with you all. Just curious if any of you have heard any reactions to, from people that you might have shared that with, both. Both the individuals from looking around the room, but also the individuals who are on the call. The, the few responses that I received were, thanks, this is great. I hope this gets. Out and about and. Yeah, nothing but positive response that I've received so far, wondering if anybody has heard. Positive or questions or any other comments.
Well, Keith, you're, you're getting a collective head nod in the room.
Yes.
About on the phone? Has anybody gotten any feedback? Sorry.
Okay. Uh, and just to reiterate, when I sent you all, it is posted on our website right now as well as sent you the PDF. Our. Strategy for sharing, for getting this out is to really leverage the. Relationships and contacts and groups that you all may be part of. So I encourage you to. Blast it out to your friends, your family, your colleagues. Your neighbors. And feel free to reach out to staff, John, Olivia and myself. If, if you need additional speaking points to the ones that I sent out, if you want some more tailored speaking points, we're happy to do that. But rest assured, that paper at a minimum is in the hands of City Council members, Mayor's Office staff and some key city staff. Moving on to the next. Not the next slide. Uh, just a reminder that the first of two public hearings on the proposed budget is next Wednesday at 5:00 PM. We currently have identified three planning commissioners to provide testimony. Matt, Jamie and Lauren. Matt and Jamie both have previous, have, have commitments right up until very close to the time. So I will speak with you, Matt and Jamie. Jamie out there individually about the pros and cons of maybe just having you sign up to, to. Give the comment on the phone as opposed to in person. Just until we know, we won't know where, how many people are, are planning on. Providing testimony at the public hearing until the day of. So I've. I've reached out to the Budget Committee Chair. Staff, so staff to Councilmember Strauss, just asking how the hybrid. Public hearing goes. I'm familiar with how budget hearings in the past have gone when it's been either all remote or all in person. So John, Olivia and I will be on hand next week to get in the physical line. To sign people up, but I believe. I don't believe I can sign commissioners up. To phone in. I think it has to be done from your phone. So I'm, I'm looking into that. to phone in. I think it has to be done from your phone. So I'm, I'm looking into that. I also, um, I think if there are others who would like to, um, like to give testimony, that would be great. I think we want to strike the balance because a lot of the testimony that I'm imagining will come forward is about preserving, uh, funds for what we have advocated or, you know, recommended funds being resourceful, which is affordable housing and community-led anti-displacement programs. So, um, I think I'm, my gut is about, I think about five planning commissioners in the context of the public hearing would be the right amount to speak specifically to the proposed, uh, cut of a third of our staff. I will craft, or I will craft suggested testimony for, um, those commissioners who will be providing testimony once I have the number down. Because, um, my suggestion is going to be, is that while there will be a common theme throughout the comments that each individual commissioner providing testimony will speak to something a little bit differently. So it won't read like a form letter that everybody's reading the same. I think that will be more compelling. Any questions about budget or the public hearing?
When I have testified in the past on the phone, you have to, say you have to sign in or, you know, basically call the line five minutes early. But then, in the past, I've also like, you know, joined the call or joined the, the hearing much, much later and been able to pick it up. So, um, and that's maybe what I'll have to do. Think I'll be.
Or on your bike.
No, I'll be in it. I'll be in a presentation at that, at that time.
Okay.
So.
So I, I'll follow up with you and Jamie just specifically around the timing of that.
I'm hoping that I'm quite late or, or that I'm like down the list so that I can talk at, okay, like, six thirty or seven.
Careful what you wish for.
I don't think I can control that.
The last in-person public, uh, budget hearing that I went to, uh, I left at nine thirty and it was so cold. So, um, so, uh, also, I'm glad, uh, Council Chair Strauss, Budget Committee Chair Strauss, has indicated that during the public comment times, that the public com- comment time will be reduced as more people call in, except for the public hearing. So the public commi- public hearing is committed to two minutes per person. So it could be a late night. I will just note, um, again, as an update, having listened to a number of different, having listened most closely to OBCD's Office Planning and Community Development's budget presentation to the Budget Committee, as well as that of the Office of Housing, I heard support from both Councilmember Morales, who is the Chair of Land Use Committee, as well as Budget Committee Chair Strauss in the OBCD presentation. They both noted concern about proposed staffing cut, uh, to the Planning Commission. They specifically called that the Planning Commission. And also noted some concerns about, is there adequate staff in, within OBCD to actually do the equitable development work and do the work that needs to be done, um, in completing the comp plan? I will note, just, just on a pragmatic front, typically, it has been my experience that, uh, at this stage, or the early stage of the budget, council members are asking questions, trying to better understand the, the pros and cons, but have not yet gotten to the deliberation point where, you know, whatever they want to put back in the budget, they need to take something out. So the state requires that the mayor present a balanced budget, which is what the proposed budget is. And the state requires that council approve, uh, a balanced budget as well. So. All right, the last item I wanted to share with you, which actually Amy alluded to, next Wednesday, which happens to be the same day as the public hearing on the proposed budget, OBCD will be rolling out, uh, the mayor's preferred growth strategy, as well as legislation that will apply to implementing the neighborhood residential areas in the proposed comp plan, as well as proposed zoning maps for everything outside of the neighborhood residential, which is, you know, what is currently urban villages that will become neighborhood centers, urban center, what is currently urban centers that will become regional centers and then TOD areas.
What about those little fifteen-minute city buildings or the neighborhood centers? So will those be in the, the base maps?
I believe so.
Oh, the blue fuzzies, you mean? I'm so excited.
So I will send this out to you all, um, but wanted to get on your radar, as well as on the radar of anybody listening into this meeting, the upcoming comp plan meeting schedule, the first of which is October twenty-third, which will be a virtual session. And then the following ones will be district-based, with the last occurring on December tenth. There will be the opportunity for public comment, including commission comment on the preferred growth strategy, the neighborhood residential, um, legislation, implementing legislation, which, which my understanding is, will be sort of standards associated with the new neighborhood residential, as well as the zoning maps. The timing is a little tight. Uh, we will be getting a briefing on all of this at our next full commission meeting, which is October twenty-fourth. And comments on all of that will be due back to OBCD on December twentieth. And, uh, as is our practice, and just the way our, our calendar falls, we only have one full commission meeting in November because of the Thanksgiving holiday and one full commission meeting in December, um, because of the Christmas holiday, which is actually after the December twentieth date anyway. So we are going to be dedicating all of our meetings, uh, between October twenty-fourth and, basically December twentieth, to, um, to review of the preferred growth strategy, mayor's preferred growth strategy, the neighborhood zoning legislation, and those zoning maps. So I will be putting together a proposed schedule, sharing it with you all, as well as sharing it with OBCD staff and tapping them as needed. I think we're, um, I'm, my suggestion is that we, um, soon after getting the briefing on the twenty-fourth, that we make a priority really honing a very narrow and strategic scope of what we want to weigh in on. Given the fact that we will and we have those three full commission meetings, basically means that we have to, unless we convene a special meeting, we need to approve any letter on all of this at our December twelfth meeting.
Okay.
So, um, I'm open to ideas. It's, uh, absent seeing the actual work that's going to be presented, uh, or in release next Wednesday, it's, it's hard to come up with a very specific strategy. One thought that I had is that we might actually break down into sub-activities based on the three areas of work that are going to be released. And, and I know this is a tricky time of year, um, going into the holidays and the end of the year. So I'm open to ideas, uh, and we will discuss this at, um, our next Executive Committee meeting, which is next week. Just have a strategize. We'll do a touch point on the budget strategy, but I think we kind of have that down and really shift our, our gaze towards, uh, our strategy for, um, providing cogent and compelling comment on what's going to be released next Wednesday in a very, developing that in a very short time period.
Question. What are they releasing next Thursday specifically? And this feels like a stupid question, but how does all the urban center planning relate to our draft plan?
Those, those zones weren't slated to change. They were all punted to the sub-area plans. So.
Okay.
So the growth strategy doesn't have any change to the regional centers, with the exception of the addition of Ballard. So they're kicking the can down the road. So we're dealing with the rest of the city.
But we're publishing a future land use map with new types, including neighborhood centers and, um.
But they're all outside the.
Yeah. But, so what are they releasing next Thursday, next Wednesday?
So next Wednesday, and it is a little hard to, to, it's challenging and it's, it's challenging even if you're kind of swimming in it. Next Wednesday, the mayor will leave, will release his preferred growth strategy.
Preferred growth strategy.
And that, and it won't be the growth strategy element of the comp plan. But it will be teeing up what will be the growth strategy in the mayor's proposed comp plan, not the draft, but the final, that will go before council around December sixteenth, sometime in the middle of December of this year. Council will then take a couple of months to chew on that and approve it by April, I believe, of next year. The neighborhood residential legislation that will also be released next Wednesday for public comments? My understanding, and I do caveat this with my understanding, is that that legislation will be approved or will, will be considered and hopefully approved by City Council all by next May in order to be in compliance with House Bill eleven-ten. So it will have the development standards of how, you know, where four units are allowed on a lot, or six units are allowed on a lot. And then the zoning maps for the neighborhood centers and TOD areas. And I, maybe our G R Ls, I don't know. I don't know. I'll find out next Wednesday. We'll all find out next Wednesday. I imagine there will be quite a lot of attention to those proposed zoning maps at these public meetings, because that's when you're going to have individuals who rightly, understandably, is going to be like, where's my house on that map?
Yeah.
Where's my place of work on that map? Where's my school on that map? So, uh, that, that's what I know. So the comp plan, the mayor's proposed comp plan will be relea- will be presented to council, transmitted to council by the end of this year, December twenty-twenty-four.
So have we seen any variant of what will be released or is this totally new, what's getting released next?
We saw the draft.
Okay. And so is it responding to our comments?
We will find out.
That's the question.
Do you remember when we were all confused about or worried about how their zoning proposals and areas of displacement? What did they hurt the most communities? And they said, I don't know. We haven't talked to them yet. We're going to be talking to them this fall. Is this that outreach campaign on the neighborhood centers model?
I asked about that in our district meeting.
Yeah.
For the first round, and they said the same thing. And there's been nothing and any verdict about it.
Because if, if so, we may want to go and be at some of those meetings so we understand what the sentiment, what folks are saying.
My, my hope, and I, I've seen that you throw your hand. Yeah. And my, my hope is that we will have at least one commissioner and at least one staff person at all of these meetings. And again, I know it's a lot to ask the timing of the time of the year and whatnot. However, I think it is important for us to be at a minimum staff, to have our ears to the ground and hear what's, what's being said. Yeah. I hope that there will be some sort of response, if not next Wednesday, but over the next few weeks of the question that you raised, that how is displacement being addressed throughout the plan, which of course they won't, we, we won't find out, public won't find out until the end, until the, the comp plan is transmitted to council at the end of December. But also, how is displacement being addressed in these zoning maps?
I think my question got answered.
Did you also have a question or comment?
No, I think, I, my understanding is the neighborhood centers are going to be a sequential sort of like elaboration, but they're not under the same deadline.
Yeah. There's no neighborhood centers in the, in the areas of high displacement.
There weren't. That's what I'm wondering.
But like, even if, like, the location of this dispossession moved from like, near my neighborhood to near your neighborhood, which are very different parts of District One.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's nothing deep in the valley. It's, it's, it's Beacon Hill with the suburbs. Yeah. I support a committee like mustering, you know, use of L U T N A. And I say that not as a chair, so I defer to the chairs.
You don't belong to either of those committees anymore.
No, I'm a free floater.
Volunteering.
No, I just, I think that those like double our capacity to have these conversations, you know? So if we're all going to be looking at the growth strategy, you know, I'm just remembering when we were all trying to review all of the elements of the, of the draft plan, you know, and that was, that was a lot of work. But if we're just looking at the growth strategy, you know, I just, can you talk to when like EIS analysis will be available for this and how we kind of like dig into, you know, what, what analysis?
That would be.
How can we evaluate the zoning maps if we don't have the, 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 the content?
I do not know when the F D I S will be released, but I would assume it will be released around the time of the, when the plan is transmitted to, um, to City Council. There is a provision in the proposed budget that, uh, requests funds for a supplemental EIS that will come out sometime next year studying greater density in areas where density already exists. That's my understanding. Based on looking at what was put in the public, in the budget, which is.
So urban.
When is the last City Council meeting this year? Should we expect?
Um, I don't know what the last City Council meeting is. However, I would imagine if OBCD is able to transmit the plan before the end of December, just pragmatically looking at the month of December, I think it would be the week of December sixteenth, because the following week is the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. And then the following week after that, there are just two days, the thirtieth and the thirty-first.
Because they're required to submit the spending of the year, right?
They are. And they have missed that deadline.
Adopted by the end of the year. Technically, they're not on track for
Right.
the state mandated deadline.
Yeah.
So whether or not.
Just to that point, like comment about the higher density in urban centers, maybe that regional urban center, I, like,
Yeah.
is that a study or a proposal? Is that like an idea that's floating out there? I, I just missed that comment.
I don't know.
Okay.
I believe it will be, I, well, as an EIS, so it will be a supplemental EIS to the existing EIS on the draft plan. Again, to the best of my knowledge, and I could be wrong, I believe the money has been proposed in the budget for a supplemental EIS because the plan that is going to be transmitted by the end of this year to City Council is requiring, or is, not is requiring, but is proposing something that is out of the scope of the original draft environmental impact statement, which was on the draft plan, both of which we reviewed in spring of this year.
But this, this morning, Amy referred to that as the S E I S or the regional centers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that dovetails. Yeah, and that, that dovetails, because the growth strategy was essentially, we're, we're going to leave the, the regional centers as is. We're going to propose all these other growth strategies around regional centers. And so now I think they're backfilling, they're like, well, we're also going to do something in the regional center, so we need to pay for that.
And isn't like 80% of the growth of the city plan for regional centers or some high amount?
Yes, but it's like, it's kind of like, that was sort of status quo. So they weren't, they weren't planning any zoning changes within the regional centers. So I would think under this plan, they would be then adding housing capacity, et cetera.
Which means they're taking housing capacity somewhere else?
No, no.
Yeah.
Oh, I never thought about that.
No, maybe, I don't know. I don't, I don't want to spread rumors. Sorry.
Like, exactly, housing capacity, and much of the feedback that they receive is that that actually isn't how development works.
Yeah.
Or how affordable housing happens, and so maybe it's.
That's a hopeful situation.
Maybe it's like, well, I think if we planned for like 101 percent.
Yeah.
When are we going to get to talk to Michael Hubner again?
Yeah, when is it coming back?
October 24th, 7:30 AM.
Hey, for early mornings.
We know, we actually don't be in person, right? Or no, that's, that's a commission meeting.
We'll be here. That's our, the commission meeting.
Ooh, maybe, maybe they'll come in.
We'll be here. I'll be here.
Michael may be at home.
Michael may be at home, and we'll be here.
Well, I'm going to wrap us up. I think we are, we've lost one commissioner already, we've lost two commissioners, so. Are we ready to, are we kind of, is that it?
That's it. Yes, there are questions again for those on the call. Any questions, feel free to drop it in the chat, or, or just contact me directly.
Okay. All right, thank you all. With that, I, I'm going to adjourn, this October 10th meeting in Seattle Planning Commission at 4:56 PM.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you.
Do the chat, Olivia. You do? Yeah.